Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to Albany City Council Meetings Wednesday, September 24, 2025 at 6:00 PM. I've now called the meeting to order. Would you please all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. Mayor, can we roll call, please?
Counselor Van Germlen.
Here.
Counselor McLeod.
Present.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Counselor McGee.
Present.
Counselor Newton.
Present.
Counselor Thompson.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here. Next, I'd like to make you all aware that we have a supplemental agenda item for this meeting, Consent Agenda Item 3 Bravo dot four, Approval of Grant Application, DLCT DLCD Technical Assistance Grant, Albany Comprehensive Plan, Comp Plan, and Anne Catlin spoke about it at the last meeting. So next on the council's agenda is an adoption of the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, can I trouble you for a?
I forgot. Yes.
Okay.
All right.
We've got one little piece of business to take care of first. Chris, Ms. Bailey, please step in. Join the mayor and me.
I know. Uh-oh, it's right.
This is such a big occasion, I had to actually write up some comments. Only two pages.
Can I use my glasses?
I got the glasses. All right. It was September of 2003, 22 years ago, that Chris came to work for the city of Albany. And prior to being hired formally, she worked as a temp even for the city, right? While you attended the University of Oregon. And what you did was you sorted through these handwritten work orders for the water department, as I understand it. So she has served over that time as the Community Outreach Program Coordinator, Water Quality Control Supervisor, the Airport and Transit Manager, and the Operations Manager. And then in 2015, Chris became Director of Public Works Operations. In 2021, she became Director of Public Works in its entirety, leading what is the city's largest department with a portfolio of responsibilities that goes from transit system to drinking water, from power generating capability at Vine Street, to the Albany Municipal Airport, the oldest airport in Oregon, from the maintenance of our streets to the maintenance of the 18-mile Saniam Albany Canal, and from our vital wastewater treatment system to our environmental compliance program. So it's a very broad range of responsibilities. And along with Kristen Preston, Chris is the corporate knowledge of our current litigation efforts, trying to bring talking water gardens back to operation as it was intended. Along with Stacy Belcastro, she's the architect of our ongoing efforts to develop the ability to maintain our streets. And under her watch, the city set up a brand-new utility to manage stormwater, transitioned the Dumbek Water District, acquired a new bus barn, initiated the Cox Creek Project, helped bring us through the pandemic, let's not forget that, managed our solid waste program and revised recycling guidance, and worked tirelessly to bring street maintenance to the forefront. When I asked her to serve as City Manager Pro Tem for a while and Deputy City Manager, and to take on our strategic planning effort, she did so with characters of grace and wit. She has chaired the statewide infrastructure investment board, and maybe you will continue with that? Graduated from the Northwest Women's Leadership Academy, and then stayed on to help with managing successive cohorts at the Leadership Academy. She was and is a mentor to many. And although she will wince and deny it, along the way, she became a porta potty expert. Chris has always been the person who could explain anything in a very clear and effective way, whether it was stormwater systems, or federal grants, or how a water treatment plant works. She explained in a way that made sense, and often made us laugh. She could walk into these chambers, explain a sewer upgrade, and somehow make it sound like a TED Talk. She made stormwater management sound exciting. So Chris is known for her clear and effective communication. So when she said, "I'm leaving", in a resignation letter that was, I kid you not, about half a paragraph long, I knew she meant it. No euphemisms, no metaphors, just heartbreak when I finally recovered from the shock. So Chris is leaving for another city. I won't name names, but let's just say they're about to get a great person added to their staff. They know it, and they need it. They're about to get a lot smarter and a lot sassier. Her knowledge of infrastructure is encyclopedic. Her sense of humor is legendary. Her ability to leave us for another city is unforgivable. But in all seriousness, Chris has been a pillar of this city. We're proud of her, even if we're also a little bitter. Mostly proud, slightly bitter. Okay, very bitter. But I'm also grateful. I'm grateful for her leadership, for her sense of humor, and I'm grateful for her professionalism and her diligent pursuit of excellence. Chris, you've mentioned that you have goals, and I quote, "have goals and expectations of your own work" that you're not meeting. This says, I think, that you have very high expectations of yourself. The rest of us think you've done a stellar job. We'll miss you. It's been my distinct pleasure to work with you for eight years, and I'm very grateful for all that you've done for the city of Albany, and personally, to help me negotiate a steep learning curve. Your integrity, your sense of humor, your friendship, and your willingness to help me and anyone else who needed it, made this job fun. And so, I'd ask the mayor to present to you, on behalf of...
Well, I'd like to say one, a couple things about Chris.
Yeah, please.
So when I got tricked into running for city council, and I got elected, no, she didn't do that. But when I became a city councilor, she reached out to me and said, "I'm willing to teach you what you need to know." And it was about the infrastructure, roads. I didn't understand how roads are constructed until I talked to Chris. So the first three months, I spent time with each department head. But I spent a lot of time with her because Peter told me she has the biggest department. And I learned a lot about this city. So with that, you have been a bright star in my life, and you made me laugh, and you made each other laugh. And I'm going to miss you, because you have been a resource for me, and a mentor as well, and thank you very much for your service. And also, three veterans standing here saying goodbye to one another is a very powerful moment for us. And Chris, you've been a wonderful person for this city, and I sincerely appreciate everything you've done for us.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm a hugger.
Me too.
Mayor, would you present that on behalf of the city and the council and staff, the key to the city?
For Chris, Chris Bailey, Director Bailey.
Thank you.
I'm miscalling you Director Bailey.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you all. Next, under tonight's is a consent agenda, council.
I would move for the adoption of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Thank you. Next is presentations and ceremonies, item four. The next first presentation is Benton Clowney, Benton Benton Clean and Strong Republic Services presenting on the proposed Coffin Butte landfill expansion and appeal, pages 17 through 18 in your packet. I think your presentation coming up?
Good evening, council. Well, he's setting that up. My name's Julie Jackson. I'm the municipal manager for Republic Services. I know many of you, and I have worked for this company for 20 years. And I'd just like to take a minute to say that I've worked with Chris Bailey for all of those 20 years. And she has been a pleasure, a professional pleasure to work with all of that time, no matter what the issue. We will miss her. I also work with another city that will remain unnamed, and I will probably see her there. But I think she is, I just want to echo what a pleasure she's been to work with that entire time, and what a consummate professional she is. So I introduce myself, and this is Paul Coster. I'll let him introduce himself.
Hi, yeah. My name is Paul Coster, and I'm the environmental manager for Coffin Butte Landfill, as well as all republic sites in the state of Oregon. I've been at Coffin Butte in Oregon for about nine months now, and loving the weather so far, so. But I grew up in Cleveland, so this is mild from what I used to, so. But thank you for allowing us to present tonight.
Yeah. So we are here to talk about the proposed landfill expansion at Coffin Butte. If you want to switch slides. We could tell you a little bit about Republic Services nationally and here locally. We have about 13 million customers nationwide. We, I'm just going to go through a couple of these. We have 79 renewable energy projects across the country. We operate 80 electric vehicles across the company. Another thing I'd love to talk to this council about. We have one in Salem. If you ever want a demonstration, we would be happy to bring that down. We have a goal to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and we have reduced those by 15% since 2017. 20% of our fleet is powered by RNG, renewable natural gas. And I think those are things that really demonstrate our commitment to sustainability and to climate. If you, if we could say we have about 5 million average pickups per day across the country. That's a lot of trucks on the road and a lot of people's waste going to the right place, whether it's recycling, composting, or to a landfill. We have about 208 active modern landfills across the country and 18,000 trucks, 42,000 employees, and 24% better safety performance than the industry. You may hear, it's often said that this is one of the most dangerous jobs, one of the 10 most dangerous jobs across the country, driving a garbage truck. So safety really is our number one, whether it be in a truck, or at the landfill, or whether it's me going up and downstairs at the office. Safety is the most important thing that we do, and we take it very seriously. We also have hired 5,000 vets, and we have a program aimed at hiring vets, both locally and nationally. We pick up about 6.4 million tons of recyclable material, taking that to proper disposal locations where it can be repurposed into other products. We have 25 organics facilities across the country. We're very fortunate to have Pacific Region Compost just north of Corvallis here, so that we have a ready and reliable source of organics composting. And then 75 recycling centers across the country. One of the things I can tell you is that until recently, we did not have a recycling center in Oregon, and that hindered us a little bit. But you may or may not have been aware that we recently, as of August 1st, took over what used to be called Garden Services. It is a MRF, a material recovery facility, which is now called a co-mingled recycling processing facility, a CREP. You'll hear us talk like that all the time, and if I say something that you don't know what it is, please stop me and ask me. But we now will be making some major upgrades to that facility so that recycling can be processed in a very high-tech way. And it's something that, as we work, it's just in Salem, by the way. And as we work on this through the next year, we'd love to take you on a field trip up there to see what good work we're doing there. So, next slide, Paul? I'm not going to go through this. We get a lot of awards because we're a really good company to work for. Here in Western Oregon, we called our, we call the part of the Mid Valley that we work in here, Western Oregon, we have about 116 employees. We power 4,000 homes with the energy created from the landfill gas-to-energy facility each year. About 200 yards of compost are donated annually to community gardens. About $170 million in annual economic impact in the state of Oregon. And that really does include our counterparts in Portland and in central Oregon as well. We've been in this community 70-plus years, serving the community, first as Albany Lebanon Sanitation, and then Allied Waste, and now Republic Services. But what I can tell you is some of those same people who began with Albany Lebanon Sanitation still work for us. And then, we have donated about 385 in National Neighborhood Promise Grants Awards since 2019 here in Western Oregon. 250 of that went to the local YMCA for the all-inclusive playground that we funded there, and we're very, very proud of that project. In Albany, you may be aware, maybe not, we support the Boys and Girls Club, the Historic Carousel, the Albany Chamber Business Extravaganza, where we rushed in from today, the Albany Downtown Association, the Albany Visitors Association, Albany Pride, Albany Public School Foundation, Greater Albany Rotary, Albany Urban Air Festival, Safe Haven Humane Society, the Veterans Day Parade, the Lions Club Breakfast, Pancake Breakfast, and many more, many, many more in-kind donations that we make throughout the area. I didn't bring my glasses, and I'm reading Little Type, but one of the things that we do want to talk about is conserving critical habitat at Coffin Butte. And Paul, I'm going to let you talk about that, because you have your glasses.
Yeah, so we have about a 560-acre conservation area that's dedicated to preservation of the Oregon white oak. I believe that's just off of Coffin Butte Road. And we also have researchers and students from Western Oregon University who do research in the area. And in fact, I think they completed a research project just last month in this area. And so we do this every year, and they reach out, and we happily provide them the time and space to do their research in this area. We, through monitoring and everything, researchers have identified more than 60 birds, amphibians, reptile species that thrive within this oak habitat or landfill. The last word I have, it's everything is doing really well in this area, and there's no impacts from the landfill in this, in the aquatic, or the, you know, with the birds or anything else. So that's a good positive. You know, some of them have been highly associated with these native trees, which is good. We also, you know, so it is a very good habitat that we have surrounding, or buffer that surrounds the landfill on site. I guess I'll just keep talking here. One of the, one of my main jobs when I got here was to assess and look at the landfill and what we're doing in our processes, and our requirements, and are we meeting those requirements, and recommend to the site and to our area to improve what I found is deficient. And that has been a big part of my job here, to make sure we are staying in compliance with everything. And, you know, the landfills are one of the most highly regulated processes or areas in the country, you know. I mean, because you're not going to find to be able to build a landfill anyplace from a fresh ground. So it's really critical that we have this expansion, because we are, it is permitted, but to try to build in our landfill from scratch in the middle of nowhere, it's nigh impossible nowadays because of all the regulatory requirements. But I make changes where we need, and then one of the three things I want to really focus on here is the methane gas collection, the liners, and the leachate management system, and the groundwater monitoring. One of the things about our gas collection system, we have three times the required landfill gas wells that, you know, that a typical landfill is required to have. We recognize that we need to collect the gas as the waste decomposes, so we insert more wells. And typically, you're allowed to wait five years. Well, we just put in 27 wells this year, two months after the operations moved out of the area, because we understand the critical nature of collecting gas right away. We've invested over $9 million in the last six years. Total 78 wells, over almost 40,000 linear feet of horizontal gas pipe. We have a really good relationship with PNGC, who powers the plant. So they take the methane gas, and they have five engines and powers 4,000 homes. And I believe, is it?
Mostly it goes on the grid to consumers' power and other small power companies.
Yeah. Last year, we also upgraded to an enclosed flare to better capture the gas. It used to be two candlestick flares, and you would see these flames out in the middle, and everybody thought it was something on fire, but it wasn't. So we are required by regulations to convert to an enclosed flare, which we did. We also work well with Pacific Compost Facility or PRC. They process more 140,000 tons of organic material each year. And that's critical, because the organics, taking that out of the landfill, helps reduce the odors and the decomposition. So that's where your methane comes from, from all your, all the organics that go into the landfill. And there's this big argument, landfill's wet versus dry climates. The fact is, there has to be landfills in wet climates. Otherwise, where would half the country landfills be? All the East Coast, South Florida? It's going to rain. You're going to have a wet landfill. And they say, "Well, put it in the dry area." Well, it's still going to produce just as much methane, just over a longer period of time. And they actually have to inject liquid into the landfill to get that decomposition going. So it's basically zero-sum, wet versus dry. One of the things that we're required to do to stay in compliance is do surface emissions monitoring. And this is a requirement that we do quarterly, and we break up the landfill and grids, and they walk the whole, the whole landfill surface, and they record any exceedances. And there's limits to those exceedances, so, you know, we have to make repairs, we have to install new wells. If we fail the checks, we have to put more cover on, we have to do the repairs. And we are required within 10 days to make these repairs. They follow up. And so this is a critical thing, to make sure that we reduce our off-gassing, or fugitive emissions on the surface of the landfill. One of the other things that we talk, that's been talked about is, you know, the landfill's contaminating the groundwater. Well, that's just not true. We have a very robust landfill, our liner system on the left of the screen. You can see what's typically required by the EPA. But DEQ in Oregon requires this dual liner system. And that picture on the right represents what you see over my left shoulder here on full scale. So that's a full six-foot of material that we put down before we even put any waste in the landfill. And we have a leak detection system that we check routinely to make sure there's no punctures, no... And there's been no punctures all in the landfill in our liner system to date. And that dates back for a good 40, 50 years of line system. So it is a very robust system, and we, and that keeps everything inside, so there is no groundwater contamination from that. And in order to ensure we stay in compliance, we're visited routinely every year, six to seven times, whether it's the EPA, stormwater, DEQ, for Title V inspections, wastewater, industrial wastewater discharge, our permits. We're monitored pretty regularly, and we're required to submit a lot of documentation to make sure we stay in compliance. And if we're out of compliance, we will know about it. That's basically my little presentation. I'll turn it back over to Julie.
So this slide talks about a revenue stream to Benton County. Benton County is the host county for Coffin Butte Landfill, and so there are some financial incentives to the county for that, based on, one, a contract, and two, on the amount of waste coming into Benton County. So they get a per-ton amount of waste to Benton County. One of the things that we've heard a lot about is that if the expansion were granted, that there would be a lot more waste coming in annually. And that just isn't true. Coffin Butte Landfill is kind of working at capacity, and so we anticipate that it would be almost identical to what's happening now. It would just be depositing it on a different side of the road, so. We can talk about this. Coffin Butte was designed as a regional landfill in the 1970s by something called the Shemecata Regional Solid Waste Program. It was a cooperative-funded grant via the Environmental Protection Agency. The initial participants formed the program. They wanted, they had this idea that there should be a regional plan. The cooperative is no longer in place, but we're still fulfilling its mission as a regional landfill. One of the things that you may be aware of is that the legislature passed a bill that required a Mid Valley Solid Waste Plan Task Force to be, which is not up and running yet, but we think it will be very soon. And that, that, the great thing about that is we think there should be a plan too. We think there should be a solid waste plan, and there really isn't one. And this landfill expansion could give us, it's not a very long expansion. It gives us about seven more years, which would allow the time to create a really good, solid, viable plan, not just for Benton County, but for the surrounding counties. And so if you look at the map, you'll see, we're not talking about waste coming from Washington and California, and Idaho has been suggested. But the vast majority of the waste that comes to Coffin Butte is from the surrounding counties. Really, Lynn, Benton, Marion, Polk, and a little bit from Lane, and some from Lincoln County. That's where the bulk of it comes from. There's a little bit from Washington County and Montanoma County, some from Yam Hill, but very, very little from the Portland market. Some things that we did, we, you may be aware, we submitted a landfill expansion request in 20... I'm going to get the years wrong, 2021, I believe. And the Planning Commission denied that application. We were set to appeal, but rather than that, Benton County came to us and said, "Hey, let's open this up to the public. Let's have a public process and really hear what the public has to say about this." So we spent about, almost a year, working with the programs that Benton, a consultant Benton County hired. And that program was unfortunately called Benton County Talks Trash. We don't, we think this industry has worked very hard to come into the modern world and to focus on sustainability and not trash. So that's why I say that, but that's just me. So through that program, we heard a lot of information from what some of the opponents of this expansion said. And one of the things that we did was we reduced the size of the expansion area by 50%. So it's 50% smaller than our original proposal. It does not close Coffin Butte Road. Initially, we proposed closing Coffin Butte Road. This expansion does not do that, and in fact, it does improve Coffin Butte Road, adding things like bike lanes and wider shoulders to the road. We tried very hard to increase transparency, communication, and by listening to community responses. One of the suggestions is to improve vegetative screening, containment of the working face and disposal area of the landfill. So when we talk about the working face, that's the open part of the landfill at any given time. One of the things that's been said is that now we're going to double the size of that. Not true. The working face of the landfill currently will be closed with temporary closure material, and we will be working with a very similar-sized working face in the new expansion area. And we just want to also point out that we think Coffin Butte Landfill provides reliable and affordable disposal capacity, especially during this time while the region creates a plan. It matters in Lynn and Benton Counties, as well as some of the other local counties, because we contribute hundreds of thousands of dollars a year in cash and in-kind services to many kinds of organizations. That's not to say that money is more important than the environment. We don't believe that so. We think they go hand in hand. But we like to demonstrate that we're a good partner, and we've been a good partner long before we asked for an expansion at Coffin Butte. We create local jobs, and one of the things I can tell you from being at the Business Extravaganza all day with the chamber, we talked to several hundred people throughout the day, and we were ready to talk about Coffin Butte Landfill, should anybody want to or have questions. We did not have one question about Coffin Butte, or concern about Coffin Butte. We had questions about, are you hiring? Because I think folks know that we are a good company to work for. And what can we recycle? What are the new recycling regulations, and what does that look like? We, keeping disposal local gives some control locally to what happens. We, you may not be aware, but we have a crew out that is the Benton County Work Crew. So we've partnered with the Sheriff's Department to do highway cleanups, and those are once every week. Five years ago, we were doing once-a-quarter cleanups. So we've upped that to once a week, and we see great results, and we're very happy. It's a great partnership, because they're out doing work anyway, and needed some things to do, and we needed the roads cleaned. This says direct benefits to Philomath, and of course, that should say Albany, but Coffin Butte... But Coffin-Butte is the second-largest source of discretionary revenue to Benton County. And it's about $6 million annually that goes to Benton County from Coffin-Butte, what we call the host fee that goes there. We have been working with Benton Clean and Strong. And some of you may have heard of Benton Clean and Strong, the coalition that's working to make sure that all sides are heard in this landfill expansion case. And what we can tell you is, over 60% of Benton County voters agree with the key reasons to improve the expansion, which are renewable energy, keeping costs low for families and businesses and investments in the community. It prevents trucking waste hundreds of miles away because the nearest landfills, when we talk about going east to landfills, we're talking 200 miles one way. So, we don't know what that looks like because landfill contracts are very confidential. We don't know what rates we would get. We don't know what the trucking rate would be. We don't know what happens with fuel costs. But we know that there's substantial expense to doing that. And this also approval would also ensure long-term planning and reliable services for Albany, Lynn Counties, as well as the other counties that Coffin-Butte serves. Benton County Commissioners will be voting this fall, we think in November. We want to ensure that you have all of the information. We are happy to answer questions. A majority of residents surveyed support the expansion and we stand behind it. So, I think that's kind of our presentation. We'd love to answer any questions that you have.
So, counsel, you know, I've let them go over because this is an important issue for our residents. I'd appreciate if you have any questions. Please feel free to ask those questions now.
An earlier slide, farther, way back farther in the presentation, showed the annual amount of money that goes to Benton County. And it was around $2.5 million. Could that, that's, there you go.
Oh, so, that is just the host fee. Then there's a per-tonne fee that comes in as well. So, that's only a prescribed amount for those years on the host fee. We don't know what the per-tonne amount is because we never know what's coming in.
One, I reviewed other materials about this over time. And I looked up, I was intrigued by the second-largest source of income for revenue for Benton County, part of it. So, I looked up their budget, their current budget. And it shows about $5.1 million for the biennium, rather than annually.
I'm not very up on how they're budgeting, but I can...
I'm borderline, but that's the, I'm recording the number that I can...
It's more than that. Yeah, significantly more than that.
I've had constituents reach out to me about leachate, leachate? Am I pronouncing that incorrectly?
Leachate?
Okay. And like, the forever chemicals. Can you go more in-depth? I'm just curious. I know there was a brief overview, but tracking and monitoring for this?
So, right now, there are no federal regulations or guidelines on limits to PFAS or any sampling for PFAS. However, I do know DEQ right now is looking to review and redo their stormwater permit to include PFAS sampling as a recording device, not like just to keep a record, to determine all areas within Oregon, to determine what benchmarks they can develop outside of a federal. But right now, there's nothing to state one way or the other. And we have 35 groundwater monitoring wells that we monitor, and they meet all drinking water standards. So, you can literally take the water out of that well and drink it.
Are those ground wells close to the site?
They're all, there's some that are probably within 100 feet of the landfill proper, and they go out to probably a mile, mile and a half on some of the farthest ones, yeah.
That's good to know. I had a constituent email about their North Albany well, and they were concerned. So, it's great to hear that maybe something 100 feet to a few miles away.
Yeah. They surround to the east, to the west, and to the south. We can't go, I'd have to double-check, but we can't because the property's in the mound to the north on that deck.
And just to kind of update everybody, so leachate, in our industry, we call it garbage water. But leachate is any kind of liquid that percolates through the landfill. On this poster, we have a pipe running through the landfill that collects that leachate. So, we have a primary and a secondary collection of leachate. And then, that is pumped under the road. It goes into holding tanks. We have some leachate ponds. There's been some discussion that that's leaking because folks see liquid on top of those ponds. Those are actually floating covers on the ponds. So, what you see on top of that is rainwater, not leachate. We then pump that leachate out into tankers and we haul that to be discharged at wastewater treatment facilities. So, that's what leachate is. The forever chemicals that you're talking about are the PFOS and PFOs. And those are something that I think, as an industry and as a country, we're dealing with. I will say that those chemicals are not created in the landfill. We are a passive receiver of those chemicals, meaning we get sludge from wastewater treatment plants, for example. That's a really big source of PFOS. It's in many, many, many of the products you use in your home, at our parks, all kinds of things. It comes to us. And it is something that, as an industry and as a country, we're gonna be dealing with. And I think there's some very promising treatments and pre-treatments on the horizon. So, we're definitely working, as an industry, to look into those and see what we can do with that. Because we know it's a problem. We didn't create it, but just as your wastewater treatment plant didn't create it, you get it. We get it as well. And so, we're all gonna be looking at what to do with that.
Oh, go ahead. So, I know you probably can't extrapolate this data, but I'm curious if, so, I know one of the points was this would keep things a little more affordable for a few years until like a better plan can come up. I'm wondering if you could tell me maybe like your best guess, like if we had to change, if our, I create garbage. I'm sure everyone here creates garbage. Everyone throws stuff away. How much would our garbage go up?
Yeah, it's so hard. It's really, really hard to know. Because we would, at some point, negotiations would have to start with a landfill. There would be negotiations for a rate. There would be transportation costs. There's labor costs. There's so many things involved that we either can't control or can't foresee. So, one of the things I can tell you is that we're looking for a new place to take leachate. Currently, it goes to the city of Salem and the city of Corvallis. And you may have heard that the city of Corvallis is asking us not to bring leachate to them after the end of the year. And so, we intend to comply with that. And we are looking, currently, we pay about $0.11 a gallon to take that to the city of Corvallis. Probably the most feasible option we have right now is more like $0.75 per gallon. So, it's a huge increase. And those things all impact the cost of doing business at a landfill. One of the things I'll tell you about a landfill is that whether we take in five tons or 500,000 tons, or a million tons, there is a cost to running that landfill that doesn't go down, no matter how much waste comes in. So, as, you know, as we might change things, the cost could go up exponentially. And we will, when we have better idea about what that can cost, we can try to extrapolate that, but we really just don't know. And I wish I could give you a better answer than that.
One of the things that we looked at is the what-if scenario is, if we have to train it to Grandview, which would be the closest place, it's $0.91 a gallon. And we produce 35 million gallons of leachate a year. And that's why you see the tarps on there. They're not to reduce the gas or prevent the emissions off. They're primarily to reduce the amount of rainwater that infiltrates and thus produces, adds to our leachate production. So, when you see all those tarps on that whole landfill, it's to keep rainwater off and shedding it off and not having contact water. So, that's why if you drive by, you see all those tarps and everything. I know it doesn't look good, but it helps us reduce our leachate. But that's, just to give you an idea, that's what our cost would look like for leachate to Grandview in Idaho.
Where's Grand, excuse me, where's Grandview located?
Idaho. Yeah, yeah.
I thought Arlington was also a place.
I believe that's Waste Management, Arlington in Oregon, yeah. So, they, yeah, that's Waste Management.
Different company.
Yeah, different company, yeah.
Counselor McGee?
I have two questions. The first one is, you said that you all produced a lot of the jobs in the area. What would, perhaps how many jobs could be expected if this expansion was approved?
Oh, you know, we don't see a lot of new jobs because we really aren't expanding the work that we're doing at the landfill. We're just using a different location. So, I wish I could say that we would see lots of new jobs. But I don't, maybe a couple new jobs because we'd be doing a few things differently. But about what we're doing now, we anticipate.
Okay. And then, one of the concerns is, or, excuse me, what made you all take it from, down, your expansion down from what it was to 50% of what you're thinking about now?
That really came directly from the Benton County Talks Trash process and listening to what the folks in the area had to say about the landfill. And so, this area that we've asked for is kind of the last piece of the landfill. It's already zoned landfill, but we need a conditional use permit to be able to use that to place waste on. And so, this was the viable alternative without closing Coffin-Butte Road.
And one of the things that I'd like to note that a lot of people say, "Oh, it's 10 years, why can't you do it later?" Well, it takes years for permitting, design, construction. We can't construct during the winter, so we have to, we can only do so much in the summer. So, and this expansion allows not only Benton County, but all the surrounding communities to come up, like she said, with the regional plan, to, we'll eventually have to close, we'll eventually fill it up, whether it's 10 years or 16 years. It's just that gives all the surrounding areas the time to really develop a comprehensive plan to what's gonna happen when we close.
And remember, we've been in the CUP process for three years now. So, nothing happens quickly. And it shouldn't, but it's a very long process. And so, 10 years may sound like a long time. 10 years sounds like a scary, short amount of time to us.
Counselor McCow, do you have anything? Counselors on the side?
No questions, but could I get that amount of, the number of gallons of leachate figure one more time?
It's about 30, we produced 38 million gallons last year.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I ask a quick follow-up to Dr. McGee's comment. What would happen to the jobs that are here if the landfill isn't expanded? She asked about new jobs. I'm just curious about the current jobs too.
So, eventually, when the landfill closes, we'll lose those jobs. We are responsible for that landfill 30 years after it closes. We'll have a couple of employees on site, but the, how many employees do we have on the landfill?
100, 110, I think.
Not, not at the landfill, but about 35 employees at the landfill. I would anticipate that to go down to just two or three.
And then, one last thing, sorry, I'm remembering, I've gotten a few emails about this. I know you touched...
Me too.
So, I know you touched earlier about the little flame, little...
Oh, the flare.
I've been, I had an email, someone said it was like an undue burden on the local fire department and that there were some uncontrollable fires. This is an email I got today. Has that, has there been like, when did the last fire happen? Or what is happening with that?
We requested a dare fire provide documentation for that. And there have been five small fires within the area since 2017. There have been 19 calls, and it turns out, a lot of people driving past seeing those old candlestick flares at the open flame, which now is gone. So, a lot of people would call, so they would come out. But their own documentation from 2013 shows there's only five confirmed small, and two of those were from the camp...
2013. So, I think there were five since 2017 and eight since 2013.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Eight since, okay, that's, yeah. So, over 10 years, eight. Okay.
Counselor McCow?
Can you expand on those eight? What do you consider small?
We sometimes, one of them was a smaller brush fire by the open flame, by the open candlestick flare. So, during a wind event, after the farmer had cut down the weed or whatever, it blew up and caught and landed back, the embers landed back in that field and caught the field on fire. One, some of the other ones are usually, sometimes we get hot loads that someone throws away lithium battery. We recognize it, and you know, sometime, we have a place that we offload and we will water that load down and bury it, or water it, mostly bury it in dirt, snuff it out. And that's typically how we handle those. They're usually hot loads, we set them off to the side to ensure that they stop. And you know, the one time, the one that everybody talks about as well, you know, we initially knocked it down, and then someone driving by saw some smoke, and then the dare fire had to come. But our response was within 10 minutes. And we have the equipment to handle that. We have all the big yellow iron and dozers to bury anything that happens right away. I don't know, those are the, those are the two, the two that I know most recent. But further back, there's zone documentation really, where they were, what they were. But they were small enough that they were contained within that, within a small amount of time, within a couple hours.
Not like an unmanageable fire?
No, not, not like the big one that everybody talks about from the 90s when, before we owned, before Republic Services owned it. I don't know at the time.
We weren't there, neither of us were there then. But what I can tell you is, at that time, it wasn't owned by Republic Services. The working face was more than double the size. The working face, we keep the working face very small intentionally so that, so there isn't a capacity for a much larger fire. And we also cover the working face every day, either with tarps or with soil, so that we're able to prevent fires in that way as well.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you very much for your presentation.
So, I'm just gonna tell you, I left these for you because I know you guys are always very interested. We have new materials that go in the recycling that began July 1st. And it's pretty clear on here, but if you have questions, lots of people here know how to get ahold of me, and I'd love to talk to you about recycling too.
No, I really appreciate this. Have you posted this online?
It is posted online. We emailed it out to all of our customers, and we'll send it out again at the end of the year.
Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Next on tonight's agenda, and I do wanna apologize, I felt this topic was important enough that we should spend the time and listen to the presentation. So, we're gonna be fielding questions from this also. So, please, I appreciate your patience. I will now go with item B on your presentation and ceremonies. Albany Civic Theater ACT Presentation, Doug Moxley, page 19 of your packet.
Good evening. My name is Doug Moxley. I'm currently serving as the President of the Albany Civic Theater Board of Directors. And thank you for this opportunity to tell you about some of the exciting things happening at ACT. Some of you may already know this, but 2025, 2026 is ACT's 75th anniversary season. Back in November of 1950, a small group of people interested in community theater put an ad in the newspaper announcing an open meeting to talk about establishing an amateur theater group. From that meeting, Albany Little Theater was born, which was renamed Albany Civic Theater in 1967. Since its inception, our theater has been completely volunteer-operated. We have never had a paid employee. Volunteers serve on the board and in various manager positions. Show directors give their time and talent to present a year-round offering of plays, musicals, and special events. Actors, designers, crew, musicians, ushers, box office staff, all are community volunteers who keep the operation running. As someone who's been involved at ACT for close to 25 years, I still marvel at how we're able to assemble and stage an entire season of shows, year after year, decade after decade, relying completely on volunteers. It's really incredible. Well, we couldn't let a landmark anniversary like this go by without doing a few special things to commemorate it. So, I'm gonna go through a little list of some of, what some of those things are for our 75th season. So, first of all, we have what we call a season of favorites this year, with all of the shows in our 2025, 26 seasons selected from among the most popular past shows of our patrons and volunteers. Our season opened on September 19th with the comedy Blithe Spirit. And up next is Evil Dead the Musical. Other shows in the season include Alice in Wonderland, The Pirates of Penzance, and A Midsummer Night's Dream. We've also curated a special year-long exhibit at the Albany Regional Museum, celebrating the theater's rich history of volunteerism and community involvement. That exhibit opened on September 4th, thanks to help from the amazing staff at the museum and a very generous donation of printed materials from local business, No Dinks. and a very generous donation of printed materials from local business, No Dinks. If you haven't already noticed, we recently refreshed the marquee and sign on our building. That's important because we realized that our building between the bridges is highly visible to people traveling through the downtown area. We installed new metal tracks and invested in a completely new set of marquee letters. And this work was made possible through a City of Albany Collaborative Tourism Promotion Grant. And we are remodeling our lobby. As the living room for our patrons, we wanted to update the decor, furnishings, and technology in our lobby with the goal of making it more accessible to both patrons and volunteers. And this work was made possible by a grant from the Oregon Community Foundation. In addition, in addition to reducing some of the physical barriers in our lobby, that grant also allows us to provide closed captioning for two performances of each of the shows in our current season. And that's something we haven't been able to do in the past. We've also unveiled a new logo and branding for the theater and on August 30th, we launched a fresh new website. Finally, in honor of the small group of people who helped found the theater way back in 1950, our annual awards ceremony, Big Night, is being held on November 15th, the same date as the first meeting of those community theater enthusiasts. I'd be remiss if I didn't also talk about ACT's partnership with the Albany Downtown Association on a large Oregon Main Street revitalization grant project. That funding will allow us to refresh the facade of the entire block now that the theater also owns the long vacant building at 129 West First Avenue. We've appreciated the experience and guidance of the ADA as we navigated the highly competitive grant application and review process. The clock on that three-year project started on July 3rd. We're beginning with HVAC replacements and re-roofing the newly acquired section of the building. And while that work is happening outside, we're using the space inside the building to tackle some ambitious projects, reorganizing our costumes, props, and our furniture storage. And when completed, we have some big plans for that new space. First, it will serve as a stable rehearsal space. With one show on stage and one or two others in rehearsal all the time, scheduling can be very tight in our existing space. We're also planning to have a second stage where we can do smaller productions, live music, perhaps dinner theater. We're also going to expand our youth offerings. Our youth summer camp is incredibly popular and we definitely see the need for more youth-oriented theater opportunities. ACT is powered by generosity. Not only do our volunteers give their time and talent to running the theater and producing shows, but we're fortunate to have incredible donors who understand the value of having live theater in their community. While many community theaters struggled or even closed their doors for good during the pandemic, ACT had no payroll to meet, a mortgage payment due, and money in the bank from our donors. And while our stage was dark for a couple of years, we used that downtime to do interior renovations, organize decades of historical documents, and plan in earnest for our reopening. We've now been part of downtown Albany for three quarters of a century and are proud to have strong connections to the city, other downtown businesses, and the greater community. Thank you again for this opportunity and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about ACT.
Council, any questions?
So mazel tov on 75 years, amazing.
Thank you.
Expanded youth program, as a daughter who was devastated she was not cast as founder in last year's, I'm excited to hear this. My daughter is an aspiring thespian. And then, did I hear dinner theater?
Possibly, yes.
Okay. That sounds very exciting.
That space has a kitchen.
Okay, all right.
Because it was a restaurant, so we're leaving the kitchen intact for the time being. It's not a functional kitchen right now, of course, but.
I love it. Excited for that. Looking forward to what you guys do in the next 75.
Any other councils have anything?
I can say that Mr. Moxley took me on a tour of the inner sanctum of the two, well, three buildings a couple, about a month ago. And it's astonishing and frightening how much stuff is in there. Costumes and props and stuff. It's, it's, reminds me a little bit of All That Jazz, only dustyer. It's going to be fun for everybody to go through the, what's, the treasures that are as yet unknown and certainly poorly organized, but they will be, that they've got great plans. And for everybody who remembers our former Democrat Herald reporter Jennifer Moody, she is in Blithe Spirit. So if you have, yes, yeah, she's been in a couple of ACT productions. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm excited to see Evil Dead. Halloween is my favorite holiday.
Did you get to go last year?
I did not.
Okay. You got another chance?
Thank you very much for your presentation. Looking forward to the work that's going to be done. I was there for the tour as well. And that restaurant next, next to the one you purchased, it used to be called the Espalon. And when it closed, I didn't miss it, but that space has been empty for a long time. I'm happy to see it put back in use.
Yep. Great, thank you, appreciate it.
Next on tonight's agenda is a public hearing to consider comments on the 2024 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, CAPR, and community development needs that could be addressed with community development block grant funds, CDBG funds. For those who wish to testify, there will be three options available, which were described in the council agenda. I declare the public hearing open at 6:55 PM. Does the staff have a report?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor and councilors. I think in lieu of a presentation, I wasn't able to share my screen and now I lost it. I wanted to highlight page 24 in your council packet and go over some of the accomplishments for 2024. And I also want to draw your attention to a handout that we forgot to include in your packet, which is on the dais, which is a funny little report that it spells out exactly what, how the money was spent over 2024. So in the 2024 program year, we received $349,000 in money from the Department of Housing and Urban Development to run the community development block grant program. And as you may know, we asked for applications and then the Community Development Commission is, one of their jobs is to review those applications and, and then make awards to those, to those applicants. In the program year, we spent $401,000 and we were able to support a variety of activities. I wanted to just go over some of those, which it may be hard to tell what those activities are from looking at, at the table in your packet, which is, is this table here. But we've supported the Cardva bought a new property and money has helped improve that property, provided much needed safety improvements for their occupants. It hasn't quite opened yet, but we're hoping it will serve many residents over the years. Then on the housing side, Dev Northwest operates a revolving loan fund program to provide grant, sorry, to provide loans to low-income homeowners for rehabilitating their homes. And they completed six projects and have money to hopefully do one more. Then we provided funds to a variety of public services agencies in the area, including the Lynn Benton Child, well, sorry, including Creating Housing Coalition's Community Outreach and Assistance Team. They served over 1,100 people, although we were only able to report on 113 of them. And because they have to collect a lot of demographic data, so they did intake on those. Of those 113, I want to tell you that 63 of them were successfully housed, which is a really, really big number. Then the Senior Companion Program operated by Cascade's West Council Governments. They provided services to nine area shut-ins and helped two low-income seniors who are the companions. They receive a small stipend for gas. Then Jackson Street Youth Shelter served 40 Albany residents over the program year. And in total of those where we got detailed data, we served 241 residents and six households in the program year. All of the, the national objective to provide services to low and moderate income residents or areas were met. And most of the residents served were very low income, which means they earn less than 30% of the area median income. And this public hearing is required to, to hear comments on our performance in the past year, but also about any community needs. Two public hearings are required each year and this is one of those. The other is when we have our annual action plan, which was back in, in October. So we have not received any public comments on our performance, but it's an opportunity in case somebody else in the audience wants to ask questions or provide comments. And then I'd be happy to answer any questions about these programs if you have any. Thank you.
I will now call on those that registered to speak, if there's any on the sign up sheet. We have none, thank you. I declare the public hearing closed at 7:00 PM. Come for council discussion. Would the council like to make a motion to authorize? Well, let's discuss it first, any questions at all about the program? Counselor Thompson?
I don't know if this is appropriate or not. You know, I also, I serve on the Albany Partnership for Housing, so I think about these things. And, and we, we, the partnership got a 2025 grant to do some good work for some of our buildings, some HVAC. But when you talk about community needs, I just think there needs to be a focus towards projects that get people into housing and to build low-income housing. And I don't, I don't anticipate, this is not, that's not something for CDBG itself to do alone. But I think the, like if I could characterize the 2024 projects, you know, they, they, they kind of go to various types of services. And I know with the partnership, tangentially, when we talked about the CET, I mentioned the, the fact that if you want to do new building for low income, you need, you're not going to be able to do it holding a mortgage. You need a whole bunch of buckets of funding. This could be one. And I would just challenge the members of the Community Development Commission to think about a large grant. And, and I'm not saying to the partnership, but a large grant to one organization to do a project that creates housing for low-income individuals or supported housing and/or supported.
I mean, that's a really good observation and I just want to let you know that these funds, it's really challenging to use them for building new housing. There is another pot of money that HUD has that we have not gotten and we will not ever get. It's, it's the home dollars and those are the funds for building housing. Corbels happens to get those funds. You had to receive a certain amount of money when you first became an entitlement city. I mean, didn't receive that $500,000, so we were not going to get home funds. The ways the city can use CDBG funds to support new housing, we have done, but we have to have applicants willing to apply. And we do these agency consultations, as I noted, and we do try to see if there's any way we can support any of our partners out there in helping them acquire or build housing. So the ways CDBG funds can be used to get new households, affordable housing units, it can be used for property acquisition or clearance, site clearance, or for any of the public utilities that are brought to the property. That's all it can be used for to help support housing. There is, there is one caveat, if a community development-based organization, and Dev Northwest happens to be the one in our area, applied, they're able to build housing. But we get so little money, and I know that $350,000 sounds like a lot, but we allocate 15% of that for public services and 20% for program administration. So we have about $220-ish thousand left. And with all of the federal requirements, the cost for environmental review, it is just really challenging to get applicants in for that. But we continue to work with different agencies. We have in the past also supported Habitat Pre-Humanity. They used funds one year to re-acquire a property that they built. So we really keep that house in affordable housing. But it's a really good comment. It's very frustrating because a lot of people think these funds might be available to build housing, but it's really challenging to make it work and to make it pencil.
I agree. I probably shouldn't have used the phrase building. I probably should have used property acquisition would be more like logical and more with this kind of money, which would still be creating a home for someone.
So if someone can apply for funds and if, you know, $200,000 is enough to help with that property acquisition, absolutely. And, but then that would probably be the one project aside from public services. We just haven't received those applications and certainly we, we send out, again, we meet with agencies, we're getting ready to do that and we're doing a survey, but it's great to hear from you to know what your priorities are. And, and I'm thankful that you passed a CET that will start generating money over time and we will begin working on with the Community Development Commission and with you to figure out how can we use those funds to best add to our affordable housing stock. So.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I was just in a comment that I thought that to see that 247 residents' households directly impacted with that $350,000, I was like, oh, that doesn't seem like a lot of people. And then I did the math and it's like $1,500 per person, which I started thinking, wow, that's actually a huge impact for the little amount of money that we were able to do per resident to really make those lives, to really have such a positive impact on those lives. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
And one of the things that we did last time for '25, we had, we voted on getting money to partnership, Albany Partnership, because the roofing needs, the HVAC needs, because if the roof is gone, they have to move out. So we want to keep those people in housing. So that's an important thing for us. Okay. Would the council like to make a motion or authorize or to submit the 2024 CAPR to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD? We know it's HUD.
I move to submit the CAPR report to HUD.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you very much and have a good evening. Next on tonight's agenda, item six, public hearing, public, oh, excuse me, public comment. Public comment is a time for Albany residents to speak and for counselors to listen. The council won't discuss topics or make decisions during public comment, but will take comments on request under advisement, under advisement. Speakers are limited to three minutes and must follow the council's rules and observe the standards, the same standards of decorum. If unable to do so, they will be asked to step down and take a seat in the audience for the rest of the meeting. When you get to the microphone, please give your name and state whether or not you live in the City of Albany. By sign up?
Okay.
First one on the list is Cameron Sotomayor.
Believe that might have been written only, Mayor.
Okay. Oh, there it is, right there, written. Thank you. Next was Nancy Yailoris and it's written, unless she's here, okay. Catherine Sterns and she submitted written Turk's testimony as well. Debbie Palmer, she was written as well. And Pam Castle is also written. I read all those this afternoon. And then there's some back here. Joanne Nucio Stockslager. Please.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Joanne Nucio Stockslager and I'm a resident of North Albany. I am here today to voice my strong opposition to the proposed expansion of Coffin Butte Landfill. While some Albany city officials may support this plan, I believe it poses serious risk to both our environment and our community's long-term well-being. One of the most troubling concerns is the issue of leachate, the contaminated liquid that drains from landfills. This toxic mixture can carry dioxin, heavy metals, industrial solvents, and PFAs. PFAs, often referred to as forever chemicals, have been linked to numerous health risks, including cancer and immune system disorders. Once these chemicals enter our groundwater or rivers, they are incredibly difficult, if not impossible, to remove. They are called forever chemicals. They are called forever chemicals because it can take years for the body to excrete them. Our water treatment plants cannot filter them, and even new EPA standards, if enacted, would cover only a handful of the thousands of PFA compounds in existence. As a caregiver to a loved one facing the effects of chronic illness, I have witnessed firsthand how diseases linked to environmental toxins can devastate individuals and families. I worry that increasing the amount of waste being dumped in Coffin Butte will only add, excuse me, to the burden of such preventable health issues in our community. Furthermore, this expansion would mean that Coffin Butte becomes a dumping ground for garbage from communities across Oregon. This isn't just a local waste issue, it's a regional burden being placed disproportionately on us. Our residents should not have to deal with the environmental and infrastructure impacts of other cities' trash. We have a responsibility to safeguard our water, our air, and our people. Expanding this landfill ignores these responsibilities and compounds the harm. I urge you to protect public health and reject this expansion. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Laura Olet.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak regarding the proposed expansion of the Coffin Butte landfill. My name is Laura Olet. I'm a retired family physician, and I have lived in Albany for 30 years. I have numerous reservations regarding the proposed expansion. Number one, the site. The fill was built on fractured basalt in an area that experiences heavy rainfall. At one time, Coffin Butte served as a gravel pit. Landfills should be built on heavy clay, and new fill would not be permitted at this site today. Two, age. The fill started out as a military waste dump in World War II. It's older than I am. Typically, landfills are capped after 20 to 50 years, and what I've read is that old fills leak. Modern fills are built with improved environmental and safety standards. Three, methane. Coffin Butte is a super emitter of methane. In 2022, the EPA counted 61 leaks exceeding the legal limit of 500 parts per million. Some sites emitted 118,000 parts per million, which is 200 times the legal limit and is potentially explosive. The EPA retested in 2024 and found 41 exceedances. Subsequently, carbon mapper has surveyed the site by air and has documented massive methane plumes. Not only is this a horrific fire risk, kilogram for kilogram, methane is 80 times worse for global warming than CO2. Fire. The Adair Fire Department has been called out to put fires out at the fill 28 times between 2013 and 2025. Republic Services reported only five fires to the DEQ since 1999. Firefighters themselves report dangerous conditions with gases bubbling up underneath the tarps as they try to extinguish the flames and report filling ill after having done the work. Leachate. I contacted Benton County Soil and Water District, the Lucamute Watershed, and Willamette River Keepers to inquire about the testing of leachate from Coffin Butte. They do not test. I've been told that Republic Services tests their own leachate and then reports to DEQ. I have not been able to locate any data regarding the specifics of the leachate. Roads. Over 90% of the garbage taken in at Coffin Butte comes from outside of Lynn and Benton Counties. We take in garbage from the western one-third of Oregon and southwest Washington. The constant heavy traffic degrades local roads and spews trash along the way. Seven, expert opinion. After too many hours of research and testimony, the Benton County Planning Commission voted unanimously to deny expansion of the fill. And finally, risk management. Why should the residents of Albany, Corvallis, and Adair Village bear risks and burdens associated with landfills for dozens of municipalities 100 miles away? Prostitution and drug running are lucrative activities as well, but that doesn't mean that we should endorse them.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Next up is Mark Jaeger, I believe.
Good evening, Mayor Johnson and members of the council. My name is Mark Jaeger, and I'm a resident of Benton County and have lived in the Albany and Corvallis areas since 1981. My first job tonight is to submit a letter to you from Lori Tully, who is a Ward One resident. She didn't have time to get that into you before noon today, so I'm going to be submitting that, and she is writing a letter in opposition based on PFOS, methane emissions, leachate, odor issues, and other business impacts. So in 2022, I served for eight months on the Landfill Life and Land Use Review Subcommittee of the Benton County Talks Trash Work Group. I have previously served more than 10 years on Benton County Solid Waste Advisory Council and Disposal Site Advisory Committee, and I'm a registered environmental engineer in Oregon. I'm here today to speak about the proposed expansion of the Coffin Butte dump. I understand that Republic is on the agenda tonight. I listened to their presentation, and I'm not going to go through a rebuttal of the misrepresentations, many misrepresentations in their presentation, but my message is clear and simple. Please do not take any position on the proposed expansion until you hear the complete picture of the dump and its expansion impacts. As you've heard, in 2021, the Benton County Planning Commission heard hundreds of hours of presentations and reviewed hundreds of pages of evidence about the proposed expansion resulting in an unanimous denial. In 2025, the Planning Commission heard many hours of presentations, public testimony, reviewed 5,000 pages of expansion materials, and they also resulted in a unanimous denial. This is not a simple issue, and a decision to expand will have major long-term impacts. Please do not be swayed by Republic's presentations, their PR firm efforts to guide the talking points. There are implementable alternatives to more landfilling. The existing landfill has 12 to 14 years of capacity available now. It is not needed for landfilling to be expanded for Benton County or the region. There is plenty of capacity. There's always more to the story, and I urge you to take the time to learn the full story before taking any position on behalf of the residents of Albany, including those in North Albany, the folks most directly affected by the impacts of the dump and its proposed expansion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, item seven in your packet, resolutions exemption from competitive bidding and special procurement for the Albany-Millersburg Water Reclamation Facility and WRF Innovair Blowers Upgrade Project. Craig Prosser.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilors. You have before you a memo and resolution for the special procurement of the Innovair IM40 series blowers project at the Albany-Millersburg Water Reclamation Facility. Excuse me. This is a really exciting project for us to be a part of, and the city appreciates the ability to partner with the Energy Trust of Oregon. The Energy Trust incentive of over $427,000 leaves the city's out-of-pocket cost at $47,481. The projected annual savings of almost $75,000 on operating costs, energy costs, and return on investment of about six months, these made-in-the-U.S.A. blowers will provide much-improved operational efficiencies, including dissolved oxygen control, nitrification and denitrification for ammonia removal, and overall better process control to help meet more stringent nutrient limits for the MPDS permit compliance. It will also allow for future expansion to handle population growth for the City of Albany. We currently have four centrifugal blowers that are over 15 years old, and two of them are in need of attention, maintenance attention, well, excuse me, repairs. The cost of those repairs are significant, and with the Energy Trust incentive offsetting purchasing of new blowers, that will help save the city and the taxpayers money for maintenance and repairs. Staff recommends city council approve the special procurement for the Innovair blower projects, and I can answer any questions you may have at this time.
Counsel, do we have any questions? Comments?
I thought, I thought I had a question about what do these blow, but then I reread the memo, and so now I know. I just wanted to say that we have benefited multiple times from our partnership with the Energy Trust of Oregon. They've saved us hundreds of thousands of dollars, and I love seeing that continue. Taking, I think we, we're taking advantage of it as often as we know about it, aren't we?
We sure do.
Yeah, it's, it's a great system. Thank you.
Do the councils have anything? Thank you very much for your presentation. So do I have a motion?
I move to adopt the resolution to exempt from competitive bidding and procure the Innovair blowers.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you very much. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Next on tonight's agenda is business from the council. I'm going to start at Ward Three and work down to Ward Two. Counselor Smith, do you have anything?
I had a meeting with a constituent today who lives on North Shore Drive, near Bain Street, at the corner of North Shore and Bain. He will be coming to the council at our first meeting in October to talk about potential vacation of right-of-way at the corner of North Shore and Bain. That's adjacent to his property. The street was reconfigured in the last couple months to eliminate a dangerous curve, and he's, he'll be asking for, anyway, for, to acquire that piece of property, and it will be up to us to decide how to make that happen. While we were there, he gave me a tour of, one of the Swan Lakes is in his backyard, and he was showing me a variety of aquatic vegetation that's growing there, including one that's an invasive that hasn't been here before. And there's a gigantic clump of it right behind his house, and he believes, he says he's seen some in Waiverley Lake. So I informed the naturalist and Public Works about that this afternoon. All that led to a spontaneous, complimentary recital of how much he likes living here and why. He loves the hot air balloons, and he had great fun at the Casey and the Sunshine Band concert. He loves the renovations on Water Avenue and Montith Park, spends a lot of time there. He's lived here for, he retired here. He was born here, but lived most of his life elsewhere and came back. And he just thinks this is a great place and complimented the city council on the work that's been done in the last, during the time that he's been here. He's having a great time. He also said that he was interested in getting involved, so I took that opportunity to encourage him to check out all of the potential appointments for kegs, and he's going to do that. He's a terrific guy, and he, he also complimented K&amp;E Excavating, who've done the work on North Shore. They've been, the employees have been great to some of the residents. There are a lot of older residents who live on that street, and there were times when they, it would have been difficult to get in and out of their driveways during the construction, so they would pick up their mail and bring it up to the house, or pick up Amazon deliveries and, and help out in that way. By the way, if you go down North Shore from now on, you'll be impressed with the speed bumps. They are the most aggressive ones I've ever seen. Nothing slows traffic like a steep hill. They're, I'm sure they're, they're designed properly, and the point, of course, is to slow people down. It works.
Thank you. Counsel McGee.
Just two things. One, I had an opportunity to meet with Ty, the executive director for the Albany Youth Orchestra, who came and gave us a presentation, sit down with her, talk more about the schedule that they'll be, the students will be playing. So I plan to attend maybe one of the concerts, so keep you all informed on that. Got an opportunity to attend the Business Extravaganza today, and man, the Albany Visitor Association table. It was really fun. Got a chance to see familiar faces and meet some new ones.
Thank you. Counsel McLeod.
Nothing tonight. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Counsel Van Jemlin.
Nothing new tonight, except for happy first day of OSU classes to all of the faculty, staff, and students in the area.
That's why the traffic, okay, I get it now. Okay, thank you. Yes, I know. Thank you for explaining that. Counselor Thompson?
Nothing, nothing new, nothing to report. I was just thinking, after last meeting and the discussion over the TLT revenue split, I don't think, I was going to ask for, I don't, I don't think this is so difficult to ascertain, what, like, in detail did we spend that 70% of TLT on this, in this budget? And, and the previous biennium, I don't think, I don't think the previous biennium was delineated out when we, when we talked this year's budget. I just want to see what's going under that. You know, it was, it was asserted that we are already spending close to around the 70%. I just want to know what's being funded under that.
We can update that for you.
Thank you, yeah.
Counsel? Okay, thank you. And Counsel.
I have nothing.
Thank you. And I had some great conversations at the Business Extravaganza today. I did send, had met with a person that brought some into my attention. It was the last email sent from the city recorder regarding the smell, and so that, that was from today. There should be an email in your inbox. And the Mushroom Festival was absolutely amazing. The parking was handled quite well, and I probably was asked to take probably 75 or 80 pictures. I gave out tokens for the carousel, and generally, people had a great time, and I learned a lot about mushrooms, which I never knew before. So with that, I will turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing I have is to just remind everybody that next Thursday and Friday is the 100th conference of the League of Oregon Cities, and I will see some of you up there in Portland where the conference is being held. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So next meeting dates are Monday, October 6, 2025, at 4:00 PM. We're for a work session. Wednesday, October 8, 2025, at 6:00 PM for city council. And when I come back, I'll be married 40 years on October 5th, so, yes, and it's pretty cool. And then with that all adjourned meeting, thank you all for coming.